Really good morning everyone, thank you for being here. We're just a few minutes from kickoff here from calling the meeting to order and we are waiting for our first floor representatives. But we'll start the meeting off a little bit differently today. Labor Day isn't normally considered a big patriotic holiday, but it is a holiday about the working people. And all of you out in this room, you know there are a lot of KIWI staff employees here, but there are a lot of other workers out here that are involved in all kinds of professions that help Polan County. So we recognize you today and if you want to know history, Grover Cleveland signed Labor Day as a state law to celebrate back in 1894. I was just a young man then. And at this time, I am, want to do something patriotic because somebody sent me this video and it's kind of dated, as you'll see some people in here in the video, but it's all the choirs of the five military services that sing the Stars by Angler Van Nistelroo. So we'll start with that. Hopefully Commissioner Crowe will come in and will continue with our invitation and place the flag. So stay with me if you're able.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are honored to have our national anthem, sung by the combined choir, the United States Naval Academy, the United States Air Force Academy, the United States Military Academy at West Point, the United States Coast Guard Academy, and accompanied by the United States Army Herald Trumpets.
which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly Foggries, thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be together and to care for our KIWI and to unify around our KIWI. We pray for wisdom and guidance. We pray to these first responders and all our staff that work so hard every day to give back to the citizens of Polan County. Just be with us as we make decisions in Christ's name we do. Welcome, Mr. Crowe. So we, Labor Day ends the summer and kicks off football. We celebrate. The, let me ask you a question before we begin. The spices, active and like. The August 14th, 2018 work session minutes, the August 14th, 2018 board meeting minutes, and the August 14th, 2018 public hearing minutes are available for review. Under our positively appalling section, there's one more feature, our Polan County Animal Control, and this is called Great News from Polan County Animal Control. And if I lean to Trevor or Frank, or anyone wants to speak on that afterward, or take any questions, that'd be awesome.
Hey, this is Ilyne Culvers, Facility Manager here at Polan County Animal Control, and I'm here to talk about three very exciting things we have going on here. First, we have our CNVR program that's actually directly related. We also have purchased a new van, very excited about that animal control van, and Eric Coombes Shelter van that happened this weekend.
This is Katie from Polan County Animal Control, wanted to talk to you about our CNVR program, Trap Meter Vaccination Release. We have vaccinated and released about 60 cats, so we are looking for donations to go to West Georgia Children's Clinic for our matching program that we have there. Every donation will go to a matching grant that we've assisted cats with. We are also looking for barn holds for safe, suitable areas that the cats that have been picked up may not be able to go back into the environment that they came from. If you have any questions or you do have a barn that may be able to help, please call
Our new animal control van that just came on the board, we get order in our 2017 budget with lots of money. Great thing about this van is essential heat and air. Animals are put in the back of the van, they do have access to air conditioner in the summer and even in the winter time, and outside lights that are working all the way around the van. So anytime we're outside trying to do something, we can see what's going on outside the van Clear shelter for the nationwide event, Hills, Foxside, started this a couple years ago, and we came on board last year, we did approximately 40, 45 animals, I think. We started this event Friday and 17th at 12 o'clock, ended up last night at 5:00 p.m., 67 animals, 67 animals left in the shelter. All got new homes. We are very, very excited about this. We really, really need to thank the volunteers that came in Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and my staff. I just really, really, really could not have done this without these staff. And the adopters, thank you. Thank you everyone who came in and adopted this weekend, we truly appreciate you.
Ilyne or Frank, have you got anything else to say about animal control? You're off. Any questions from any of the audience?
Good morning, I appreciate it. They're doing a great job out there, Trevor. Appreciate all your help. In fact, I went out there during the event, and Trevor was actually in the cat room. My wife was with us and I had to tell her we can't take any into the cat zone. But Trevor was out there and the staff was out there. Ilyne did a great job with her staff and it was just a great event. And the numbers on the, the new program are just incredible, and I had already talked with Ilyne about coming back in September to give you all an update. So, you know, we've just been doing this since I guess the end of May, first of June, so the numbers are already incredible. So we're hoping to come back, if you're willing to hear from us, back in September, or in September to hear a little bit more about specifics of that program. So we're excited about it, but they're just doing tremendous job out there, and I appreciate everything they do.
Thank you guys. Keeping with the animal theme, the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Deputy Roy Key and new KIWI Rex for the completion of the Polan County Sheriff's Office KIWI Training Program. And Lieutenant Billy Hurst is going to come up along with Mr. Key and Rex and tell us a little bit about their program, and you can see our new KIWI Deputy.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity. So for the past, I guess, seven or so years, we've been operating with just three KIWI teams, myself and my partner, KIWI Major. In the back of the room is Deputy First Class Brandon Kilgore, his partner, KIWI Vera, as well as Deputy First Class Ricky Waters and his partner, KIWI Bickle. Well, this past April, Deputy Key tried out for and was selected among his peers to become the newest member of the Sheriff's Office KIWI Division. He reported to Shallow Creek Kennels in Pennsylvania this past June for a six-week handler school, and graduated just a few weeks ago. While he was up there at Shallow Creek Kennels, he was partnered up with KIWI Rex, who you see before you. They were partnered up, teamed together, they bonded for a week or so, and then started their very rigorous six-week training program that consisted of drug detection, suspect tracking, criminal apprehension, building searches, and area searches. They certified as they teamed together through the North American Police Work Dogs Association. So that's something that we at the Sheriff's Office, because Sheriff Gillich holds us in such high standard, it's not a requirement through the state of Georgia to hold a certification, but we do, and certainly very proud of that. You know, we certainly hope that this new KIWI team has a very long and very successful career protecting and serving the citizens of Polan County, and I just want to thank you again for your time. Thank you.
Rex, you got a favor, Commissioner?
Gary Coleman, if you stand up and hold your arm out like that, just show you how Rex will jump.
Hey Davey, I'll taste like cheese.
He's ready to play now. after 17 years of service with the Polan County Parks and Recreation Department. And Mr. Justice is going to tell us a little bit more about this career.
Come here Patricia. If you would, just walk right up to her and give her a hand. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's not many times in the 17-plus years that Patricia's been here that I've told her anything to do, so I'm not going to tell her today, but I'm going to ask her, please don't be mad at me. Please don't hurt me when we finish. About 18 years ago or so, we decided that we needed some color in our parks, not just our regular old plant life and stuff, but we needed some color, some vibrancy there. And we got into the greenhouse business a little bit, decided we'd save the county some money instead of buying plants that I would kill, that we would try to find somebody that knew a whole lot more than we did about it. Fortunately, at that time, we found Patricia. I'm going to read through this because I'll forget some things and mess it up, so bear with me. Like I said, I had no idea, you know, what I was doing or what we had gotten into, so the success of that program is directly attributed to Patricia and her efforts. Since that time, she has produced a majority, if not all, of our perennial and annual color that you see out there in parks. I'm not talking about like I was doing and going to the local nursery and buying it and putting it in the ground. She's growing this stuff from seed, she's growing it from clippings from the previous seasons. She doesn't have just green thumbs, she's got green hands and arms, and she just works wonders with that, and we're thankful for her. She's done all that without direction or input, you know, from any of us, myself included. As a matter of fact, most of the direction that comes from that is her telling me what I need to do, you know, to help her get this stuff done so that she can make our parks a little bit brighter for the folks that come in there. 17-plus years working on 18, we've been blessed to have her there, we're grateful, Patricia, for your efforts, and wish you nothing but the best as you enter your retirement. Thank you so much for what you've done for Robinson for the KIWI.
As everybody's getting said, I've just wanted to read, I'm sure everybody's coming up. Presented to Tab Rudesale in grateful appreciation for over 17 years of dedicated service, Polan County Government, by the Polan County Board of Commissioners, August 31st, 2020. Thanks, Michael. We have invited guests today, no Fed awards, reports from committees and departments, we have none. No one has signed up from the public to speak on agenda items. We have three consent agenda items. Number one is appoint a higher police chief, Jameson Sayers, to the Polan County Department Family and Children Services Board for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Number two is authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with the City of Dallas regarding inspection and issuing some certificates of occupancy for the adult detention center and the Sheriff's Office. And number three is to appoint Dan Nolan to the Industrial Building Authority with a term ending December 31st, 2021. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these items to the regular business? We'll move on to old business, where we have none there also, and under new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we continue on with new business, I would like to ask the commissioners, I'd like to add one thing of new business to discuss for new business number four, and that is to, I'd like to take just a few minutes and discuss IBA and Airport Authority bonds. I've got this little information I'd like to share with the commissioners. I could do that again. So my motion is to add the discussion of IBA and Airport Authority bonds to be number four on new business.
All right, we have a motion in a second to discuss IBA and Airport Authority bonds We do have a motion in a second, so under discussion, I would just read the Polan County Code, which talks about in the event of an emergency or urgent necessity, the agenda may be amended or altered after the proposed work session agenda, or before the work session agenda, or during the work session agenda. So I just wish that we could get this on here so that if, another advantage of having it on the agenda is it gives the citizens the opportunity to respond, to read what the discussion's going to be on, maybe they want to make some comments and get on the sign up sheet for agenda items. We have a motion in a second.
To work sessions so that we can build the agenda, and that's what I'm doing, and some things have come up that I feel like is necessary to inform the public on, and this is where I'm just willing to do that business. So thank you all.
Yeah, I sort of don't mind having it on there right now, we just appreciate the heads up, and again, allow the citizens the opportunity to speak up on it also. So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say yes. And opposed, nay, nay. Under new business number one, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-43A, Resolution updating and authorizing 911 charges on telephone services and wireless enhanced 911 charges on other than prepaid wireless services, approving an effective date, repealing prior resolution in conflict and for other purposes, and can Mr. David Monford to collaborate?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Board. The first two agenda items are related to the legislation that was passed this last legislative session, and it was basically rewrote and revamped the 911 laws in Georgia, and it created a Georgia 911 authority that's mainly managed by local government. Most of you are aware, this is a bill that we've worked on for years. Back when I was president of the Georgia Emergency Number Association, we partnered up with the ACCG and Georgia AFCO, 911 Director's Association, and our industry partners to craft this bill. And what these two resolutions do is repeals the previous resolutions that we have currently in effect for collection of 911 fees. Up until this point, or January 1st, 2019, 911 fees were remitted directly to the local authorities, whether it be a municipality or a county government that ran the 911 centers. With the new law that is taking effect, the Department of Revenue will be collecting these fees, and they're going to be sending them back to the local governments. In the past, this was one of the, this is one thing that we bargained with, with the service providers to get some stuff in return. They had to write 160 some odd checks every month to these different entities throughout the state of Georgia. Georgia was one of the few states left that still had 911 fees submitted directly to the counties. Most of them are collected at a state level. So this allows them to make one payment to the state, and the state then reimburses this back to the county. It gets reimbursed the same way that we do now based on population, that actually, your home phone and your contract wireless service is sent back to the county based on where you live. So it's your service address, just like it is now. The only difference is prepaid wireless, and when we implemented that, which is the second agenda item several years ago, the state sends that out based on the population of your county. The other thing that these resolutions do, and if I can go ahead and speak to the second one at the same time, the prepaid resolution, or the law actually, General Assembly increased the amount of 911 fees on prepaid cell phones to $1.50, they were $0.75. That brought them in line in parity with all the other 911 devices. And when prepaid was first entered into the market, it was $0.75 per transaction, and so you would do like a 30-minute card, and then two weeks later you might have to add another 30 minutes, so they made it $0.75 to try and make it equal. Well, now, every prepaid service out there offers a, basically a 30-day or one-month unlimited service, and so the 911 centers we're seeing a decrease in revenue. And now we're providing the same level of service to these prepaid phones that we were the contract phones, and so this brought them up in parity with every other device that can connect to the 911 system. Along with this, and for us to get these concessions, we also, we no longer have to pay cost recovery back to the, back to the providers. So for years in Georgia, we, AT&amp;T would collect the money, they would send it to us, we would turn around and send them a percentage of it back for them to actually provide 911 service. And we no longer have to pay that fee. So the county will see an increase in prepaid funds, and we'll see a decrease of several hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to, we no longer have to pay back to providers. And that's the gist of what the two resolutions accomplish and what the law that was passed did for 911 as a whole. Let me, can I answer any questions?
As the board's speaking, a question, let me read number two, which you also, as you said, discussed or presented. Number two is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-44A, Resolution updating and authorizing 911 charges on prepaid wireless services, providing an effective date, repealing prior resolution in conflict and for other purposes. So just need to get that on the record.
Both of those resolutions, we have two resolutions that currently cover this, and this repeals so does the January 1, and the new resolution take over, along with the state collecting our fees and remitting them back to us. It's a good thing, we worked, we worked years on this legislation.
Does it help the budget?
It will, yes. As a matter of fact, hopefully it will keep us from having to take any money from the general fund again, bring us back to where we're self-sufficient.
Could you repeat that?
I said hopefully, I can guarantee anything, but we should see, our prepaid wireless fees should increase by 50%, we should see that increase by 50%. And then we're not, our, the amount that we pay out to our providers was in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 a year, so we don't no longer have to pay that. So we'll, we'll see a significant increase.
You've been working on this for two or three years?
About six years. When we first started.
For those in the room that do not know, I know you lead regionally and even around the nation from time to time in order to work together to see what changes can be made in the 911 systems, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Major, I first of all want to thank you for staying on the cutting edge.
Not the bleeding edge.
Cutting edge.
We try to be on the cutting edge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
Thank you very much.
New business number three is discuss action on charges to the Polan County zoning ordinance's planned residential development zoning district, and action to adopt Resolution 18-45, meaning the acceptance of new applications to the planned residential development PRD zoning district, and directing staff to create new residential districts for inclusion in the Polan County zoning ordinance. Ms. Lippman?
Morning Commissioners and Skipper. This agenda item is to address the extended moratorium on PRD rezonings that was done at the June 26 meeting, and as the title reads, staff has recommended Board of Commissioners to allow the PRD moratorium to expire, but to no longer accept any applications for PRD and to consider any conforming property to be vested. I liken this to, if you've ever been to the Ben &amp; Jerry's factory in Vermont, they have what's called a flavor graveyard, and all the flavors of ice cream that Oliver makes, they memorialize them in a field by their factory. And we are proposing to put PRD in the Polan County zoning ordinance graveyard, so RIP PRD. In addition to doing that, as the resolution states, myself and my staff are looking at some other changes to make to the zoning ordinance, and actually doing this is one of the work programs in our comprehensive plan from 2017, which was to create clear and user-friendly zoning ordinance and development regulations for character areas consistent with the 2017 comprehensive plan land use recommendations. So we are already working on creating some new districts. R55 was one of the first districts that we created, and I think we have a rezoning to that this afternoon, we have two more for September. We have two more for September. So I think that we succeeded in creating some clear and concise, and those are definitely tied to areas of the comprehensive plan. And I'm also going to be looking at any PRD existing zoning that is 90% or less monoplotted to see, to check on conformity, especially in the areas if they're in common ownership or if they have enough acreage, there's a 50-acre minimum. And with the downturn, some of those parcels might have gotten split up. So we would consider that as non-conforming. And that's our recommendation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. And there was a flavor called Georgia Peach that was one of the retired flavors in the graveyard. Kind of sad being from Georgia.
Is it PRD peach? Any questions?
And when did PRDs come into effect, what year?
The first rezoning was in 1994.
So this is something that needs to be revisited, taken care of. And thank you for your, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us, do you have the information? When was it that they lowered the lot size on?
I believe that was 2004.
Okay. I thought it was 345.
Yeah, there was two amendments, mainly one was in 2004 and another in 2007. I actually think 2004 was when townhouses were removed and 2007 was when the lot size was lowered. So is that right, Chris?
I think it was 2007.
It was early, I'm sorry. I can assure you.
Might be interesting for the audience to know or be aware of how much the county is already zoning PRD. Roughly?
I think there was 101 zonings. I believe the total lot was a little over 30,000 lots. Now, I know, I don't have the acreage off the top of my head, but I knew it was the size of Dallas, Brazos, and Harrah, I see. So it was the same size of three cities, twice.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for bringing it up.
Thanks for getting it done.
Yes, thank you.
And new business number four, which is the add-on by Commissioner Poundell, is regarding the IBA and Paulding County Airport Authority bonds.
Rebecca, could you help me with something? I wanted to talk a couple minutes. Video, I've got a video I want to show. It's going to take a little bit of time. There's been a lot of discussion over the years concerning IBA bonds and airport authority bonds. This video here is concerning IBA bonds. And it was in the meeting of March 22nd, 2011. And that was the meeting where we voted on the film studio. We voted on the hangar, airport hangar, and the water tower. A total of...
I wanted to get someone to look down. But don't, don't, please, of course.
You might be able to scroll down to the left as you're looking at it. You might go find it on the side, on down.
Right there.
I'll let it go back.
Generally, they don't allow outside. Flash drives are just going to be pretty, oh, here's here.
So anyway, it'll be a few minutes before they get here, but I think it's important for us to see this for today, tomorrow, and the future. And it's concerned, like I said, it's concerning those three bonds issues, which they were $1.2 million and $7.2 million. And there's been a lot of discussion over, really a lot of discussion since then, over who's going to be paying for the bonds, who's responsible for paying for the bonds, and what's going to happen with the funds, the proceeds, when those assets that those bonds are backing, such as like your home, your mortgage is backing for your home. If those assets are sold, what's going to happen with the money? I have asked, I went to the IBA and talked to several people at the IBA, on the IBA board, I talked to the chairman. We are supposed to have a sit-down meeting sometime next month, but I've been asking for it for one year and seven months. So before I leave office, I want you to know what happened at that meeting. I want you to know what I believe should happen. And then it can go from there. That project was vetted by the IBA, their board, their director at the time. That project was voted on by the Board of Commissioners, of which the only one still sitting up here at this moment is myself. And we voted to back the bonds for those three projects. It was a 3-2 vote. Myself and Commissioner David Barnett voted against the bonds. The other three voted for the bonds. There's been some discussion, there's been some discussion the last six or eight months concerning selling an asset, the film studio, and what they would do or not do with those proceeds. And the discussion started off being, they planned on keeping those proceeds and not paying back the county, which is not paying back the citizens. I sit here in this seat, and I have sat here in this seat, and I'm responsible to the taxpayers. Chairman, you sit here, and number one, you're first responsible to the taxpayers. Number two, because of your seat here, you sit on the IBA and airport authority. We've talked about institutional knowledge over the past few years. Mr. Baker and I talked about it. And institutional knowledge is people that's been here, architects that have been here to know what's happened in the past. Some people don't like to talk about the past and what we call history. But I feel like if you don't look at what the past was in history, see where you're at today, and look where you made mistakes in the past, it's hard to get a good handle on the direction in the future. In my view, do we have somebody coming?
We do.
Come. In my view, and you'll see the video hopefully in a minute. The IBA wanted those bonds for those three projects. They come before the Board of Commissioners to ask for that. And we have to ultimately, if we vote on that, we back it with the taxpayers. Whether we pay those bonds because they don't pay them, they make a commitment to pay them, and we have to come back and pay them. Then that's something that we have to do, whether we do that out of fund balance to save this account, or whether we have to raise the mill a little bit in order to fund that. That's the responsibility that we have. All of those bonds, the airport, the IBA with the airport hangar, the film studio, and the water tower were IBA projects. All of those bonds were committed to be paid for by the IBA. From those projects, which should have produced income, the hangar and the film studio. Naturally, the water tower doesn't really, you know, support bringing in income, but it supports other things out there in the future, hopefully, that would bring in income. So far, the water tower hasn't done anything. It's just there with water. When the IBA or the airport authority come to the Board of Commissioners and ask for our support, they're doing it because that's really how they get money. And if they were to go out and try to do it on their own, they're not going to get the same interest rate that we get. Because we've got, the county has a great credit rating. And at the end of the day, if those bond payments are not made, we're going to go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we've got to have the money in order to do it, whether, again, whether we take it from fund balance or we have to go and raise the mill rate. Those bonds have been being paid out of the debt service that we have. If those authorities are going to ask for money and ask for us to support them, whether it's this board today or a future board in a few months. Number one, they need to, they need to keep their commitment. If they're not going to keep that commitment, they need to come to us and they need to talk about it. There's only so many places that we can do that. One, we can do it in a meeting, whether it's their meeting, that a couple of us could go to, or they would come here and explain what they wanted to do. And that hasn't been done. But as somebody that's responsible to the citizens, I can't continue to just sit there and ask for meetings to happen and it not happen and us not take care of what needs to be taken care of. He needs to, what he do with this? Um, tried to, tried to go with the first one there. It comes up different on my screen. I think if you pull up the first one, I think it'll open up the screen and it'll allow you to go to a work session for the board meeting. All right, Rebecca, if you could go to that and move us to one hour and, one hour and 16 minutes. Paulding County Firefighter and a member of the 160. It'll be about halfway. Our tackle, when we, how, when we, we certainly have, we certainly have. How much have we reasonably spent our taxpayers to, compared to cost? It wasn't held in bounds, but I think we're there. We certainly have $20,000 that are off financially this year with this healthcare plan that we were 12 months ago. And I'd say to Jason Flanier. This is going to take a few minutes. I think it needs to happen. And I wanted to be put on the record today where we stood back in March 2nd, 2011. Number eight, discuss action to adopt resolution 17-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County to approve the bond resolution. The Paulding County Industrial Building Authority authorizing the issuance of the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority revenue bond, Paulding County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011A, in the principal amount not to exceed $1,200,000. And the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority taxing revenue bonds, Paulding County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011B, to authorize the execution of the contract between the county and the authority to authorize the chairman and other officers and officials of the county to take further actions as are necessary to provide the issuance and delivery of revenue bonds described herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chairman, please just make one change to the way this reads. I think it's important that, where it says Series 2011B that we insert is saying an amount of, we see $7.2 million clarity so that we know exactly what we're talking about here. That's just what they left out. So Series A should be $1.2 million and Series B should be $7.2 million.
I will give you a little background on each one of these. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce Jim Whitwer. He is the legal counsel for the bond issuance. He's with Bill Mar, Bill Mar, I'm not sure you have the name right. Got those, that plug in there. And Jim will be glad to answer any questions on the technicalities of the bond and resolution. But as far as the background of the projects, the Series A bond, which is the bond not to exceed $1.2 million, is a bond to construct a water tank located at or near the airport. This project has been developed out of the need to provide sufficient fire flow, not only for the airport, but also for the airport technology park. I think all of you are aware, we have hired Arcadis to design the airport and Paulding Park. I say William, the Paulding County Executive Board, hired Arcadis to do that work. And they are the group that has evaluated the need for the water tank. Wasn't a surprise to us to be able to enter the water tank out there at some point in time in order to continue construction on the airport with the corporate hangers and start construction on the airport technology park. Water tank is needed to provide the fire flow required for us to sell this. The Series B bond includes funds for a hangar at the airport and a film studio project. The hangar project is a joint venture between Paulding County Airport Authority, the Paul County Industrial Building Authority, and the Pauling Jet Center, which is our FBO at the airport. Uh, the purpose of this is to provide a facility for the Pauling Jet Center to, uh, bring businesses to Paul County Airport. We do have two businesses that are currently interested in locating there and obviously they need facilities in order to do that. So this would facilitate the recruitment of those two businesses to Paul County Airport, but also provide a place for larger hangar storage. I think all of you have been out there and seen the hangers that have been built, what we call the T-hangers, uh, which accommodate the smaller personal airplanes, but they will not accommodate the larger corporate style airplanes. So in order to recruit those aircraft to our airport and be able to sell larger amounts of gas and collect larger amounts of oral tax, uh, we've got to have facilities available partners. So this provides for that. Uh, the second part of the Series B, the film studio, uh, is a project that we've been working on in the county for, I guess, about twelve months now. Uh, we're working with a group out of California, Road Town, uh, to provide a location in Paul County for the filming of feature films. Uh, I think everyone now has seen in the newspapers and probably has heard at different chamber events about the films that have been filmed in Paul County over the last twelve months. And all of those, for the most part, are due to the state's incentives that they have put into place. Uh, Georgia has become one of the rare states in the country performing not only movies but TV and commercial ads as well due to the state's incentives. Uh, it's a growing industry. It's only been in place for a couple of years. There are only just a few facilities available in the state. So we're getting on board with this very, very early so that we can take advantage of the incentives the state has put in place and the fact that there are really very limited facilities in the state for these films and, uh, TV shows. Uh, if anybody's got any specific questions on the projects, I'll be glad to address that. As I mentioned, Mr. Whitworth is here to address issues with the bond resolution and, uh, the legalities of those.
Yeah, I, uh, that's the thing, you, uh, of course, that's a big word in, uh, truly under our files that we don't understand. But ultimately, it's buildings that, you know, that they're going to use, but they could also be used for any industry that may choose to move. If after five years, ten years, something goes away with that, we still own buildings that are worth what we put in and we can bring another into it, correct?
That is correct. And as a matter of fact, we have been able to take advantage of an unfortunate downturn in the economy of an existing building and some existing developed property that unfortunately went bankrupt in the banks. Common issue throughout the entire country. Uh, we've been able to take advantage of that and we're going to be acquiring, uh, an existing building and some property that has been developed or frankly, acquiring at a, at a very, very discounted price. So we are going to be building a new building, which would be about sixty thousand square foot building to go along with the existing thirty thousand square foot building that is there at the property. Uh, but the new building and the existing building could be used for many, many different usages in the future. A film studio is really kind of the lack of the better term, fancy warehouse. Uh, has some lighting capabilities and some insulation and some soundproofing that you wouldn't normally find in a warehouse, but a facility can easily be converted to manufacturing, uh, industrial distribution, a whole host of other uses. So, uh, we feel very, very good about, uh, the project in that, uh, as I mentioned earlier, there are very good state incentives available and we know from our personal experience here in Paul County that movies are in shot here. So we feel very good about the business prospect, but, um, it's good to have, uh, have a backup plan, so to speak. And with these facilities, there have been a prime location in our county. Uh, and I don't see any problems whatsoever for the future, in the event that the studio industry drives up.
Uh, this is something that I've been working on for approximately a year. Uh, in, uh, you know, the public, there's still people out there that don't like the air. It's heat, it's built, it's fifty million dollars the federal government put in and we're going to make it successful. And to be successful, we have to construct a water tower that will help us, uh, with Joey and his crew get the fires to begin. Uh, the second part of that is, uh, the Pauling Jet Center, which we did coming in, there were some great opportunities. Uh, this gentleman owns a company, uh, in Tennessee who'd like to move that company here. And the bank's not loaning money. We do a very, uh, cash rich company. They could make the monthly payments to come in and be able to, uh, within the next thirty-six months, take that burden off of them. And the last is the referred to as the film studio, but more than this is an investment in, in a, uh, project that unfortunately developers lost. And frankly, I don't think we'd be able to move forward with this had we not been able to pick this up at a park and then be able to at this time construct a building at much lower costs than we ever had in the past. Now, you could sit and do absolutely nothing and wait for stuff to come or you can get your county ready. The first part of that is yesterday when, uh, we attended, uh, seventy county attendance at the Capitol to receive camera ready staffs in some of the chambers where it's all very hard for us, this is the beginning of the film industry for us. Uh, and it was a good day to get started. So, you know, it, for me, it is a project that I've worked on for about a year. Uh, as you know, the former economic development group and you get an economic director in here that could, uh, help us sell our county. Uh, some people say, well, why don't you do that as a settlement, which I am. And, uh, my background doesn't, hasn't taught me where to find those people throughout the world, but what my background has is a moment they're turned over to me. I can sell a fire out of this town here. So, uh, I just want you to know that it takes that person, it takes us all getting on board. And, uh, certainly, uh, it gives time and hard economic times, I think, uh, to lead us out of this recession. Uh, and I'm willing to put that, uh, burden on my shoulder. So, uh, it's, I just want to make a public statement that it's something I am working towards for the future of Paul County.
One thing my bonds, my charter, the IBA is selling these bonds. Paul County is strictly backing the bonds and say, in case the IBA's project doesn't go, leave the bank. So we're not, we're not agreeing to pay the bonds account.
Well, yeah, the basic revenues from projects can be used to pay the loans. Uh, but, you know, basically, the general contract does say that, you know, you'll levy a tax up to one million to pay for the loans. The revenues from projects do not cover it yet. President, thank you.
Obviously, the Industrial Building Authority has, uh, other projects that we're working on. We pursue the need in the future to, uh, to do additional bond issuances for both the parks, the Roseford Park on Willford Parkway, as well as the airport technology park itself, construction of that, that park. So, uh, we have, uh, I don't want to say a mixed bag, but we have a lot of different things going on. And, uh, these are just a few of the projects that we have in works. And, uh, some of these projects, such as the water tank, obviously it doesn't generate revenue, but the projects that it supports and work that it supports will generate revenue. Industrial Building Authority will use all of its proceeds to make sure the population is true.
Okay. I think Tommy asked a question and I don't know that I understood your answer. How would you pay for the bonds?
Okay, well, I think, uh, you know this part too, but to extend the revenues, uh, some of the projects do produce revenues, whether it's leased out, uh, film studio, or the hangar space, uh, leasing, uh, lease revenues are coming from there, it can be used to pay principal charges and bonds. Uh, but the primary, you know, backup is where we get the credit rating and the low interest rates is by, and the general contract is from the building authority and the county. We're about the county pledges, you know, it's, uh, it's not a school paid like a general gage of a line, but basically pledges, uh, general fund dollars, but also a bill cap, we've won them, uh, we'll have more taxes to pay for it. And so, uh, to the extent revenues aren't available, which, you know, could be the case, that, uh, tax dollars will be used to pay for these loans.
I guess putting English, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, Blake and him have done their studies and financially, these two projects will pay for the bonds, okay? But because Blake is not creditworthy, the county is going to say, okay, we'll co-sign those bonds with Blake and Blake's going to pay them. Now, you know, for some reason, if Blake didn't, then we would have to step in. But Blake has a plan, or the IBA has a plan to pay them from the revenue of this bond.
I like that the IBA has a plan, but Blake doesn't. And, uh, and I'll mention that this is the way all industrial bonds are done. I don't know of any industrial entities that, that act around the bond, but they're all backed by a county or city or some form of municipality. This is the traditional process for industrial bonds.
How are we going to pay for the bonds while we're getting ready to do the projects that we're doing and they're going to start producing an income?
It's built into the borrowing amount of the bonds and proceeds that will come in is, uh, something called capitalized interest. Uh, and so basically, it'll be borrowed, uh, bond proceeds, placed into a separate account, uh, held by, you know, by a banking agent, a bank. And, uh, over, up until, I believe it's, uh, August first, two thousand and twelve, uh, that money set aside which are borrowed will be used to pay the first interest payments. And so that will allow enough time for construction of the projects and revenues to start coming in to pay for the bonds. So, uh, that, that's built in, it's very common for all bonds, uh, by these construction projects to have capitalized interest continually built in. So, um, that's, that's how that's going to be covered.
So outside of other than the water tower, the film industry, Blake and the, uh, hangers are going to break out the income to support the bond.
That is correct. And as well as other projects, the Industrial Building Authority already has in the works that aren't funded projects, they're just projects that move up existing capital. Um, but I also want to mention to you, um, that the Industrial Building Authority made sure that we kind of waited till the last minute we possibly could issue these bonds. In other words, uh, we've already done, uh, most of the engineering of our designated plans to the county and all the hangar. Uh, so these projects are ready to go. It's not that we're going to start putting plans together after these bonds are issued. Uh, these projects are already ready to go. Leases are already signed for the hangar. Uh, as far as ground leases are assigned for the hangar. So, uh, we're going to break ground on these projects very, very quickly and, uh, it's important to us to, to get them built as quickly as we can so that they do start generating revenue and we're not just sitting back taking their time and utilizing those proceeds that Jim mentioned. Uh, we like to minimize, minimize that construction time so it minimizes amount of bonds actually spent on interest carry that issue.
Jim, is there any prepayment penalty in that? The Pauling Jet Center could, uh, take this project and fund it after thirty-six months? Is there any prepayment penalty?
The way the bond is structured right now, there's an optional call for the bonds, which will be paid off at ten years, a standard provision for all bonds. And that's what the market likes to see and generally give you your lowest interest rate. Uh, so basically after ten years, you'll be able to call these in and no prepayment authority, uh, basically add costs and, uh, you know, so basically at ten years, you can't move this in. Uh, we discussed, uh, do these out twenty years? Uh, possibly have it set up, uh, initial resolutions, which is this one and bond resolution, not to buy the IBA. Last Wednesday, on the sixteen, to go out in those years, that, if the number looks better for that. Uh, but, uh, you know, first ten years, you know, will be in place, but any time after that, they'll call management time. And, uh, as something that can be discussed as well, we can build in other prepayments, but that's the standard one the market commonly sees and gets you your lowest interest rate. So if you do try to pull it tighter, uh, say five years, generally the market's not going to use that. Interest rates will go up through all of it.
As far as, excuse me, as far as the film industry, Tommy might be able to elaborate on this, but we, a lot of people think we're, we're so far out on the land. But with preseason weather stating that they have acknowledged that what we're doing and we're not too far out, so.
Yeah, ultimately, we, we contracted with Road Town to negotiate with the tinctures and what they call the I-Oxy Union that says we're within the zone, which means that it's like working locally. So we've got favorable approval from the unions that they will support the facilities, which, you know, like labor support for them.
I have made airports and planning to, I understand the water tower's not going to produce any money, but it's going to be there for something for the future. And I understand the hangar, as far as the film industry, you feel confident that that, that five or six million dollars, that that's going to generate the income that we're going to need? You guys are going to need, the IBA is going to need?
The performance that we have that have been created by Road Town are based on work that they've done, um, not in California, because what they've done in California wouldn't be comfortable in what we're doing here. Uh, but work that they've done in other states such as Arizona, Mississippi and Georgia as well. Uh, so they've used the existing market and the existing industry to create those performance which indicate to us that the project will, that will be successful. Uh, we have also, obviously not just taken their work for it, uh, we have gone to the Georgia Department of Economic Development, uh, which has a film industry division. And we've actually sent Road Town performers to the Georgia Department of Economic Development and asked them to stay with us for us. So they've viewed those and given us feedback that they appear to be consistent with what they see in Georgia, what they see in our market and that they don't see any issues with the performance. So having that level of expertise from Road Town as well as the, uh, the film industry division of Georgia Department of Economic Development has given me the level of confidence that I need. Because obviously, I'm not in the film industry, uh, so we need to go to the experts and, uh, those are the experts that we have a talent to.
And you have to, you need to hire them as a credit?
There'd be a contract, those are, uh, we'll have a contract with them to assist us with the design and construction of the facility and then a separate contract to operate and manage the facilities. There would actually be two contracts in place.
And, and one thing, this, this creates jobs. Now, a lot of times when you say film industry, you're talking about, you think that, that Mike Jones is going to be a new actor, but I mean the support staff. I mean, they have carpenters, electricians, plumbers, that field setup. And this, this goes along with, with where we need jobs and new jobs in the county. A film coming to town actually generates jobs that our citizens can go get hired and work, you know, in, in trade area.
It, it does generate a significant amount of jobs. The other thing that's very significant, and I think equally significant is the amount of sales facts that, that something like this will generate. Uh, when they come in to film a movie, then they bring anywhere from a hundred to two or three hundred folks in with them in order to, uh, make that movie. So that generates a huge amount of sales in terms of hotel rooms that are existing facilities in the county. I strongly suspect, which will say some new hotels coming in as well due to these facilities, so, uh, places like Home Depot, they build sets for every show and movie that's done. So, uh, restaurants, caterers, just about any kind of support service, whether it's a barber or, uh, or anyone that provides a support service will see an increase in business due to this.
Most of the people that work in the union, uh, live above I-Queen and they're built in a studio located above I-Queen. So we're encouraged, uh, about, by that too. And, uh, you know, if you look at aviation, healthcare and also the movie industry, they are ones that continue to do well even in hard economic times. So we kind of are focused in those three areas, uh, to hopefully be in position, Paul County, to come out of this recession. That's the conclusion of our regular business session. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, interaction, uh, from the staff and commissioners. Great questions, uh, do I hear of? There's no closed session, no system, we should speak to our earmuffs which are. to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, I want to say aye. Rebecca, you can turn the volume down. I wanted to look at just a couple minutes, and I know this is long, but just a few minutes of the board meeting that evening is the next video. And we'll start it at nine minutes fifteen seconds, and I appreciate it. Thank you, click down on the word board meeting, I know everybody has. Nine, nine minutes fifteen seconds. If you've worked the correct one. I don't like that.
Rebecca, can you close that video? And if you look down in the second to last file, I mean, it's the one that you wanted to get.
Nine minutes fifteen seconds?
Nine minutes, yeah, just dropped it about nine minutes and five minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Number eight, action to adopt Resolution 11-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Palm County Board, to approve the bond resolution of Palm County Industrial Building Authority, authorizing the issuance of the Palm County Industrial Building Authority Revenue Bonds, Palm County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011A, in the principal amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand, and the Palm County Industrial Building Authority taxable revenue bonds, Palm County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011B, in the principal amount not to exceed seven million two hundred thousand, to authorize the execution of the contract between the county and the authority, to authorize the chairman and other officers and officials of the county to take such further actions as are necessary to provide the issuance and delivery of the revenue bonds described herein for other purposes. Do I hear a motion? Motion to adjourn. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to see it tabled, particularly for the next meeting. Well, there's some, I'd like to have some more discussion on this, but there is some things pending in California regarding Road Town that we have contracted. Today, Mike, I think it's up in team about dedication bill towards this debt. You have mentioned a slight clarification of that.
Yes, sir, the bond covenant that the bond council, we were discussing about earlier, he said that you could impose up to one mill to service the debt on these bonds. Second, about what that means, one mill in your budget is about thirty, about three and a half million dollars a year, that's what one mill would equal. Debt service on these bonds are nowhere near that. So, the debt service on a thirty-year note would be about six hundred twenty thousand dollars a year, on a twenty-year note, it'd be about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. We'll make that determination afterwards on the bond hearing when the bond is sold. Assuming that none of the contracts come through on the hangar, and there's no income from those hangars, assuming that the industrial facility that we're wanting to build, whose first tenant will be film studios, goes completely belly up, and the IBA has no ability to pay those bonds back, then they come to the Board of Commissioners, and you have to impose enough millage to cover that debt service. We're talking about point one eight mills on a thirty-year note, you're talking about point two on a twenty-year note. The math, now, that's today's value of a mill. As the economy gets better, the value of a mill goes up, the numbers come down. There's about two years' worth of debt service built into these bonds, so the scenario we're talking about, if it did fall apart, it's two years into the future. We're not talking about imposing a mill. The goal is to never impose any sort of millage rate increase to service the debt, the revenue bonds, and the goal is to put the contracts in place to cover that debt service. But I think it is important to clarify that, because I've heard that too, with five minutes citizen listening to that, and that they confuse their.
At this point, you've got a motion in the second. This motion is second to approve the resolution.
I guess one of the issues that I have is, one thing, this seven million two hundred thousand was what I had on the agenda Friday, and that was pointed out at this morning's meeting. Obviously, I'm here in the all time of the essence, but. I think it was, it was on the, the bond resolution was hung there, because it is two separate things, 2011A and 2011B, but it didn't specify the amount, what was posted Friday, because that was the correction you made this morning, Friday, what we had. It is in the bond backup, it's very clear in there, but 2011A was specified, 2011B was not, even though both series were included on the wording, that's why we made the clarifications this morning during the work session, when we discussed. But 2011B naturally didn't have the price of the bond, but it was seven million two hundred thousand.
Correct.
So, anybody that would have looked at it when that was brought out on Friday, they just saw the one million two hundred thousand.
Right, which was a purpose of the clarification during the work session. Clear. There's a motion in the second. I'll call the question. All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
That's now three.
None.
Against? What would happen if we don't? We've had a vote, we have a vote, has a second, and it's a three, two, and here is what's in there. Items from the two o'clock planning commission, we have an application, 2011-05-D, application by MMCC. Some people may feel like that I kind of took up thirty-one minutes of your time, but I think you needed to see what it is to be, that we did and what we voted on. The issue that I have today is we have been paying the bond payments. One of the things that came up is there was a company out of Tennessee that was gonna come in there and take the corporate hangar, nobody's taken the corporate hangar, and they have, for the most part, they've been failed projects. I'm not yelling at anybody about it, I'm just stating the fact that the failed projects, one point two and seven point two million dollar bond, and it's just another failed project. When you put the failed projects together that have happened, that I have voted against since I've been in office, they come out to, right now, a million sixty-four thousand dollars a year that we're paying, that y'all are paying the taxpayers. And when we're looking at last meeting, doing a rollback, and we're looking at what we can find, where we can find one point eight, one point seven, one point nine million dollars to make up that difference, because we're doing a rollback, out of our debt service, we're paying a million sixty-four thousand dollars a year, because people that made commitments to the Board of Commissioners haven't kept that commitment, and they decided that they would not pay the bond payments, even when they brought in income. The question has come up, several months ago, they had a, IBA had a meeting where they were gonna sell the film studio. I don't know all the ins and outs about it, I pieced a few things together concerning it, but I have learned this. They were gonna sell the film studio, they put it off for right now, I won't get into why they did, but it's not right. They were gonna sell the film studio, and they don't want to take that money and pay back the bonds. So, I bring this video up today, and I bring this conversation up today, because people need to know, we can't keep coming and asking for something on projects that are, end up being failed. The IBA was given property on Hillcreek Parkway, for an industrial park over there. The contract that was written is not good. The county should have never done what they did and took that property away from the Water They took capacity away from the Sewer Department, they took sewer capacity away, and the Water Department hasn't received any money, and they're probably not going to receive money. I have talked to people about it, I've been in meetings, I don't want you to think that I'm just bringing this up today and letting this go. I've been in meetings several years concerning this, and there's commissioners on this board that know that. And you can't keep going down the hall to have a cup of coffee with somebody, or you can't keep going across town to have a cup of coffee with somebody, you can't keep going wherever to have conversations with somebody, and that's somebody, whoever those people are, don't take care of the issue. And then you wonder why we get in a meeting and you gotta bring up something that's a little negative. Nobody's fussing here, just telling you the facts. I'll finish up this year, December 31st, serving eight years. At this point today, I've never missed a meeting. I'm tired of seeing authorities not do their job. I'm tired of seeing them ask for money and not do what they committed to. And while I'm in office, I'm dealing with it, again, because I'm not getting anywhere. And when you go sit down with folks, they wanna talk to you about, yeah, I know we should pay it back, I know this, I know that, but you know, y'all really got money good, at that time, it's a low rate, we really wanna take it and do something else? You need to come and ask the board if that's what the board's willing to do, and you need to come up with some sort of agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the IBA that everybody can live with. But we can't keep funding and backing projects that are failed. It doesn't matter who the Board of Commissioners is, and it doesn't matter who changes on the IBA Board or the Airport Authority Board. The taxpayers should not be funding failed projects. They can't keep doing that. And you can't go and sell an asset that was backed by bonds and not pay it back. And then when you finally do sit down to have a meeting, you're looking for ways, through paperwork, that you can find out different ways that you don't have to go pay it back. And that's not right, and that's what you're not gonna hear in an IBA meeting or an Airport Authority meeting. People have made fun of me through the years, for saying, do the right thing. And to me, it's pretty simple, all you have to do is do the right thing. And it don't take a rocket scientist to figure out that if there's bonds that were borrowed, that taxpayers are backing, and now taxpayers have been paying for it, just like I figured they would be. And you sell those assets, which, to be honest, one of them's already been sold, that money should come back, to be put in the bank, to sit there, so that when it's time to pay those bonds back, they can be paid back. And if the Board of Commissioners today, or the Board of Commissioners in January, want to allow them to keep that money, then you need to do it right up here, in the public. Don't be making background deals. Don't do it. They're not keeping their commitment. And I want you to know one more time, I have went to them, I've sat down and talked to them, they tell me how they know they're supposed to pay it, and then when we sit, and we come up with a time to have a meeting to discuss it more, all we wanna do is work on, hey, what can we work on to find out what we can do to weasel out of it? And that's not right. The five members that are sitting up here are responsible to the taxpayers. That's the job that we have. So, I appreciate the time, I appreciate y'all allowing me to show that. We just need to do what's right, and they need to do what's right. Quit not having meetings, and start talking about it, let the public know what's going on. Quit holding off on the meetings, quit deciding you're not gonna sign papers till later. Do what's right for the taxpayers of this town, thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business. Executive session is required for personnel and land acquisition, so this time I would, well, we don't have any public participation on non agenda items, so this time I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and land acquisition. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, is a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crowell, who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He's in adjourned, into executive session. Call the work session back to order and report that no action was taken in the closed session. Any other comments?
I'm making a move with adjourned.
You're making a move to adjourned, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Planning zoning it to?